Buenas noches a todos. Si pueden, por favor, tomar sus asientos, estamos a punto de comenzar. Primero y antes, quiero agradecer a todas las membresías de la comunidad, a todos los oficiales, combatientes y personajes políticos de esta comunidad por venir a esta reunión. Primero y antes, quiero agradecer a toda la comunidad que está presente, a los oficiales, bomberos y los personajes políticos que están en la presentación esta noche. Quiero pedirle a Monsignor Herrera que tome la palabra. Quiero pedirle a Monsignor Herrera que, por favor, haga la oración para comenzar.
Vamos, primeramente, a leer un parroco de la Sagrada Escritura. Así pues les digo: "Idan y se les dará; busquen y encontrarán; toquen y se les abrirá". Porque quien pide recibe, quien busca encuentra, y aunque toque se le abre. Palabra del Señor. Justo como un servicio de otros, compasión, self forgetfulness son de tus valores, Señor, y traen paz a los corazones. La paz solo vendrá si trabajamos en consideración como un servicio de nuestros seres humanos, como algo que podemos hacer para ayudar a nuestras hermanas y hermanos. De lo contrario, el odio será dejado a la gracia y el hatredio mutuo. Te pedimos persistentemente buscar y no, como ustedes dijeron, sabiendo lo que recibiremos y que podéis encontrar y agradecer su paz, la paz que el mundo no puede dar. Señor, lo que te pedimos esta noche es que sea un inicio en nuestras comunidades de paz, de regreso, de entendimiento, de comprensión mutua. Que tu Espíritu Santo nos ilumine porque él es la luz que nos lleva al camino, al camino de la hermandad, del camino de la justicia, al camino de la paz. Suplicamos, Señor, que siempre estés con todos los ojos, que todo aquel que sirve a la comunidad sea precisamente eso, un servicio, no simplemente un puesto. Que su servicio se muestre en la hermandad y la hermandad se vea, se vea en la paz y la paz se vea en los frutos que se consiguen unidos todos. Solo tu Espíritu nos puede unir, solo tu Espíritu nos puede dar el coraje, la valentía de denunciar lo que tenemos que denunciar, pero también la fortaleza para trabajar todos juntos por el bienestar de nuestra comunidad. Te lo pedimos por tu Hijo, que vive y reina por los hijos de los hijos.
Amén.
Buenas noches a todos. Quiero pedirles que aquellas personas que no hablen absolutamente nada de inglés o que no hablen inglés, que levanten la mano para que se les pueda dar la asistencia de vida. Alrededor de las 25 personas, ¿ok? 25 personas o 30 personas, ¿ok? Bienvenidos a todos ustedes y espero que vayamos a una nueva relación en esta parte de la ciudad. Y Dios los bendiga.
En nombre del Ayuntamiento de Santa Maria, mi nombre es Rick Hayden. Quiero agradecerles, soy el gerente de la ciudad, por venir esta noche. Para facilitar la conversación esta noche, tenemos algunos equipos de traducción que solo tendrán suficiente para 14 individuos. Rhonda Yurts, ella está haciendo la mano ahora mismo. Todos los que necesiten algún tipo de equipo de traducción, si pueden ir a ver a Rhonda, tenemos suficiente para 14 y luego tenemos otras comodidades para ellos.
Para ayudar a facilitar la traducción de inglés español, todas aquellas personas que no saben inglés, tenemos un equipo especial con la mano que está allá en la esquina atrás. Si van con ella, ella les va a dar un equipo especial para que puedan ser traducidos de inglés español para ustedes. Así que todos aquellos que no hablan inglés, por favor, tenemos como 14 unidades. Se ve que así, cuando puedan, vayan a la arena, la unidad, por favor. Pueden venir, son miles, son miles.
Como solo tenemos aproximadamente 14 o 15 equipos de traducción, cabezas, parece que probablemente hay unos 10 individuos que hablan español. Me preguntaría si pudieran tener a alguien que fuera traductor, si podría traducirles para ellos y tal vez si pudieran montarlos también en ese cuarto, podrían ayudar a traducir los eventos de esta noche.
Como tenemos un único equipo, número de equipo, tenemos otras personas, este caballero que está aquí a la derecha, para el grupo que va a hacer el equipo para la cabeza, se congregan allá en la esquina, por favor, para que puedan traducirles del inglés español. Aquellos que no tienen equipo de, para la cabeza.
Al tiempo que están coordinando y recibiendo las cabezas, me gustaría presentar al Ayuntamiento de Santa Maria. Creo que cada uno debe decir unas palabras y voy a empezar con el señor Protan Bob Horrock. El señor Ralagino no estaba disponible esta noche. También el miembro del ayuntamiento de Santa Rosa, Jack Wilson, está en San Antonio.
Gracias y bienvenidos a todos. En nombre del señor y del Ayuntamiento de Santa Maria, bienvenidos a los eventos de esta noche. Espero que todos aprendamos, que obtenemos mucha información y que avanzamos en hacer que esta comunidad sea un lugar mejor que la que actualmente es.
En nombre del señor Larry Ralagino.
Bienvenidos a todos a la ciudad, a donde el mayor de la ciudad, Larry Ralagino.
Está en San Antonio. Bienvenido, soy Bob Horrock, soy el mayor de los ayuntamientos.
No soy del pueblo, pero estoy orientado, soy el mayor temporal por el momento, Bob Horrock.
Y también soy uno de los miembros del Ayuntamiento de toda América.
También estoy en el comité de la ciudad de toda América.
Y durante la noche, cuando estamos de vuelta, tenemos información... ...sobre la audiencia que hacemos para ayudar a los vecinos a tratar de mejorar cosas dentro de sus propios vecindarios. Tenemos reuniones de café con vecinos para ayudarles si tienen problemas como vecinos, para resolver esos problemas con la ayuda de la ciudad.
La información que se va a encontrar en estos paquetes es la información que se trata personalmente de cómo nosotros hacemos para poder alcanzar a la comunidad.
Antes de que vayan a casa, por favor, detengan y obtengan información y llevenla a casa y díganos su nombre o detengan y escriban en el papel y nos contactará si les gustaría que hiciera.
Antes de que se vayan a esta noche, por favor, traten de comunicarse con los otros, darle un papel, si no alcanzan a hacerles un nombre, dirección para poder llegarles, hacerles llegar a ustedes.
Y quiero agradecer a la señora Alice Patino por llamarme a esta sesión y a la reunión de la ciudad. Gracias por venir y Dios los bendiga. Gracias a Monsignor por la presencia.
Quiero darle las gracias a la concejera Alice Patino para hacer posible tener esta junta, que el señor también tiene iglesia. Muchas gracias, que Dios les bendiga.
Creo que tenía que presentar a Alice, ¿o...? ¡Oh, ahí está Alice!
Muchas gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Conocí a Monsignor Herrera y dije a muchas personas lo que creen que es su visión o lo que creen que es el lado norte de la ciudad. Y dije que realmente necesitábamos reunirnos con la comunidad. Ha pasado violencia aquí en el lado norte de la ciudad. Hicimos una gran conversación y su respuesta a mí es que necesitamos cambiar algunas actitudes. Y estoy absolutamente de acuerdo, esto es lo que tenemos que hacer. Y con suerte esta noche podremos distinguir los problemas, los problemas que tenemos y venir con resoluciones para que podamos poner algo junto.
Yo tengo una serie de entrevistas con la concejera Alice Patino, que ya ha tenido una serie de entrevistas con el señor de Iglesia. Y ha apurado los temas, algunos de los problemas que tenemos aquí en el noreste de la ciudad. Y por eso estamos aquí esta noche para poder hablar, platicar y sugerir y llegar a acuerdos cómo podemos sobrellevar todo esto para el pueblo.
Sr. Cordero, ¿quería decir algo?
Señor Cordero, si quiere decir algo.
Y luego, Sr. Cordero, también está en el Ayuntamiento de Santa Maria.
Señor Cordero también es policía de la ciudad.
Muchas gracias. Como dijo, mi nombre es Mike Cordero, soy de la ciudad. Y me gustaría bienvenir a todos y agradecerles por venir aquí y a Mrs. Patino por presentar esto. Sé que todos están aquí y tal vez están aquí por diferentes razones. Tal vez porque sus hijos son microscópicos, tal vez porque de los tiempos de los tiempos, tal vez porque de los incidentes, y no sé cuál es la razón particular de todos, pero el hecho de estar aquí es importante y lo apreciamos. Cuando... Oh, eso es correcto.
Quiero darle las gracias a todos, a la gente, a los concejales y también al hecho de por lo que estamos aquí, estamos para ayudar, para poder encontrar soluciones. A ustedes estando ayudando por razones de crimen, a ustedes están con otras razones también, pero estamos aquí, que no tienen esta oportunidad de llegar a ustedes.
Y hemos tenido reuniones como esta antes. La última que recuerdo fue en el edificio de la feria. Y muchas personas, algunos de ustedes pueden haber estado allí. Lo que es realmente importante es que si vamos a hacer algunos cambios, que ustedes son un componente muy importante para hacer los cambios. No podemos hacerlo sin ustedes.
Ya hemos tenido una serie de encuentros en el pasado con la comunidad de ustedes, pero en realidad nos estamos trabajando juntos para poder encontrar soluciones a todos los problemas.
Estamos en un minuto con el jefe de policía aquí, su nombre es el jefe Ralph Martin. Conocí a este hombre varias veces, hemos tenido algunas reuniones juntas y realmente desearía estar todavía en el departamento de la policía. Desearía estar todavía sirviendo un tiempo, estuve allí durante 36 años y me encantaría haber tenido la oportunidad de trabajar para él.
Un momento, quiero también reconocer a ustedes, la jefa de la policía por el momento, señor Martín. Ojalá, el señor cuando estaba en la fuerza, que se retirara, ojalá yo hubiera tenido la oportunidad haber trabajado con esta persona.
Algunas de las que van a escuchar son ideas que el jefe tiene y como policía pasada y como persona actual del Ayuntamiento de Santa Maria, espero que considere colaborar con el departamento de la policía, el Ayuntamiento de Santa Maria y todos en la ciudad en ese sentido, en trabajar hacia el objetivo común de hacer que Santa Maria sea un lugar seguro donde vivir, de hacer que ustedes se sientan mejor donde viven y trabajar en conjunto con el jefe Martin y el entero departamento de la policía de Santa Maria.
Ahora, señor Martín, la jefa de la policía, que se las estuviera presentando y esperamos que todos lleguemos a la comunidad, que podamos convertirnos, que todos para bien, para lograrle a la comunidad.
Gracias y animamos sus preguntas después de esto para que podamos aprender más de los comentarios. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias a todos ustedes y esperamos ayudar.
Ok, aquí, en nombre de la ciudad, me gustaría agradecer al señor Herrera y la congregación y a St. John Williams por abrir este espacio, el paro. Don, en la parte de atrás, muchas gracias por todo el trabajo que ha hecho el jefe para tratar de poner esto para nosotros.
¿Quieren que vaya a la sala de conversaciones?
Si pudieran, si quisieran, por favor, se pueden meter. Gracias, doctor. Una de las cosas es que tenemos agendas. ¿Todos tienen una agenda? ¿Están en la parte de atrás de la mesa?
Todos tienen una agenda de las que están detrás de la mesa, no es que no hay una agenda, pero, por favor, aquí van.
Si pueden tener una agenda de esa manera, tienen una idea de lo que vamos a hacer hoy. Tenemos un par de ejercicios y queremos pasar por esto tan pronto como podemos.
La agenda es importante, de esa manera está más delineado.
El señor Patino trataba de un buen punto. ¿Podrían todos los ministros de la ciudad de Santa Maria, por favor, escuchar para que podamos reconocerlos? Todos los ministros de la ciudad de Santa Maria. Creo que todos debemos darle la palabra de honor a los presidentes. Una de las cosas que he puesto aquí es la definición de lo que es la ciudad de toda América. Santa Maria fue designada en 1998 como una ciudad de toda América. Se puede ver que el premio reconoce comunidades cuyos residentes trabajan juntos y para identificar y tratar los desafíos de la comunidad y lograr el objetivo común. Hacemos eso por motivos, por eso estamos aquí esta noche. Si siguen la agenda, estamos aquí esta noche para lidiar con la participación civil. Hay cuatro partes de participación civil. Esa es la fase de iniciación. La otra parte, y ya lo han hecho, es también el desarrollo de los problemas. Y es por eso que estamos aquí esta noche, es para tratar de desarrollar problemas, para tratar de involucrar discusiones humanas. Y vamos a dividirnos en grupos de aproximadamente 10 a 15 personas y vamos a cerrarles un par de preguntas para que discuten entre sí y luego proporcionen comentarios sobre el tipo de información que quieran que sepamos de sus vecinos. La tercera parte es un plan de acción. No podemos hacer el plan de acción hasta que sepamos qué son los problemas. Solo para que les diga, no pretendemos presentar el plan de acción esta noche. El plan de acción estará hecho después de esta noche, cuando podamos sumar toda la información, ponerlo junto y presentar un plan de aplicación. Al final de la noche, voy a invitar a la gente a ayudarnos si les gusta en lidiar con el plan de acción. Así que para la agenda de esta noche, si la tienen enfrente de ustedes, la tenemos en inglés y la tenemos en español. En la parte de atrás, también tenemos un formulario de evaluación que les gustaría llenar al final de la noche para que nos digan cómo hacerlo. Mientras que tal vez hayamos hecho esto antes en el centro de la salud, esta es la primera vez que he llevado una actividad así. No soy perfecto y probablemente haya errores esta noche, pero les gustaría saber cómo podemos mejorar la próxima vez que hagamos una de estas actividades. Voy a pasar esto a el jefe de la policía Ralph Martin. Él va a decir algunas palabras sobre algunos de los recientes crímenes que ha habido en la ciudad. Y luego, después de que termine su presentación, vamos a dividirnos en grupos de 10 a 15 personas y vamos a hacer un ejercicio. Después del ejercicio, solo para que sepan, entonces vamos a pasar esto al jefe Martin y él entonces va a presentar los nuevos policías que tenemos en Santa Maria y nuestro personal de compliance. Tenemos dos policías de compliance aquí esta noche. Les gustaría saber quiénes son y cómo hacerlo. Así que al final les diré cómo les guste terminar. Así que sin más, les gustaría presentar al jefe Ralph Martin.
Este es Mike Horrock. Monsignor Herrera, gracias por estar aquí. Sé que esto puede ser la primera vez para muchos de ustedes. La próxima semana, en cuatro días, celebraremos los 39 años de cuando me convertí en policía. Nunca pensé que estaría en Santa Maria, pero puedo decirles que realmente estoy contento de estar aquí. Es una comunidad maravillosa. He tenido, en algún lugar en la área, aproximadamente 12 reuniones con diferentes personas en toda la comunidad. Y estoy aquí para decirles que tienen una ciudad de toda América. Tienen escuelas de toda América, tienen un departamento de fire de toda América, tienen un departamento de policía de toda América. No somos perfectos, pero vamos a mejorar con el tiempo. Puedo asegurarles eso. He tenido aproximadamente 20 reuniones de local de ciudad y han sido en comunidades desde Malibu hasta Linwood. Y más recientemente, he pasado cinco años en Compton. Así que soy consciente de la policía basada en comunidades y los pruebas y tribulaciones de la policía en América. Una de las áreas que quiero hablarles es que, independientemente de qué local de ciudad he participado, todos tenemos un interés común y es que todos queremos que nuestros hijos sean seguros. Todos queremos que nuestros hijos vayan a la escuela segura, vengan a casa seguras y queremos vivir en paz, queremos ir a trabajar, queremos disfrutar de la vida como podemos y en general, simplemente estar juntos, disfrutar, ver a nuestros hijos y a nuestros hijos' hijos. Y eso pasa por alto y creo que es un concepto mundial. Voy a abordar algunas áreas esta noche específicamente en relación con una dozena de crímenes que han ocurrido en la mayoría de la parte norte de la ciudad. Y voy a pasar por ellos, aunque he quitado los nombres de las víctimas y los nombres de los sospechosos. Y creo que si los miran individualmente, encontrarán que esto no es una reflexión de la comunidad. Justo como vimos hace varios meses, una persona loca fue a un teatro y disparó a 72 personas. Eso no era reflejo de la gran comunidad de Aurora, Colorado. Así que cada vez que pasa, a lo largo de los años, hemos tenido grupos y colecciones de incidentes que a veces no se puede explicar, pero haré lo mejor que puedo esta noche para hacerlo para ustedes. Así que quiero empezar al retroceder aproximadamente 12 meses y creo que voy a llevar este micrófono conmigo. Y voy a pasar por ellos con ustedes. ¿Sería un buen momento para hacer eso? He sido el jefe de la policía por aproximadamente diez semanas. Sin embargo, puedo decirles que cuando miro estos incidentes individualmente y colectivamente, no son diferentes a los incidentes que he visto en los últimos cinco años o diez años que he estado policiando. Pero es preocupante porque es difícil prevenir el crimen. La policía, por lo general, somos reaccionarios. Ahora, la despachó de Santa Maria recibe 17,000 llamadas por teléfono al mes. Nosotros, ahora, los llamados por servicio son aproximadamente 7,500 llamadas por servicio al mes. Eso llega a unas 225 a 260 llamadas por un policía cada día. Además de eso, hay aproximadamente 25 o 30 llamadas al día para el policía. El año pasado, el departamento de la policía de Santa Maria arrestó a tres y medio mil personas, lo que son aproximadamente 10 personas al día. Muchos de ellos son de origen doméstico y muchos de ellos son arrestados que se basan en los warrantos que se hicieron por los tribunales. Aproximadamente 14 meses atrás, el 31 de julio, cerca del budget in en el 1100 Norte Broadway, hubo un intento de asesinato y una víctima fue estancada. Este fue el primer crimen violento que hemos visto en un periodo de tiempo. Esto es lo que comenzó, lo que vemos como un clúster de crímenes que ocurrieron. Hubo un disputo entre la víctima y el sospecho. Creemos, y tenemos buena razón para creer que fue relacionado con drogas. Y el sospecho en este caso fue arrestado. La víctima en este caso fue arrestada cinco meses después por asesinato. Una semana después, el 8 de agosto, en el 100º bloque de West McHaleeny, hubo otro homicidio. Este fue un homicidio de violencia doméstica. La víctima y el sospecho eran casados, tenían varios hijos. En el momento de este incidente, se separaron. El esposo regresó a su hogar. Era una persona extremadamente controladora, era una persona celosa. Regresó de Arizona, donde había estado visitando. Seguía a su esposa hacia el medio de la calle y la atacó. Le golpeó cuando le golpeó con una arma y cuando ella estaba en el suelo, la ejecutó. El sospecho escapó, pero fue arrestado 48 horas después en Arizona. Dos meses después, tuvimos al primer oficial involucrado en un tiroteo. Este es el primer oficial involucrado en un tiroteo en unos ocho años. Membros de nuestro equipo de ganga, nuestro equipo de narcotraficantes y nuestro equipo especial de armas recibieron un warrant de un juez para arrestar a alguien. El sospecho fue vigilado. Intentaron conducir una detención en el sospecho. Era un no metamfetamina. Se obtuvo información de que el sospecho estaba armado y usualmente está armado 24 horas de día. El sospecho confrontó a los oficiales y ellos regresaron a la fuega y el sospecho fue asesinado. El siguiente día, el 9 de diciembre de 2011, en el 1000º bloque de Norte Broadway, tuvimos otro asesinato relacionado con el gang. Cuando la víctima dejó el budget in, fue confrontado por sospechosos. Ahora, este fue un miembro del gang Guadalupe que había sido liberado de la prisión estatal por AB 109, el 109. No estaba en buen estado con el gang Guadalupe y básicamente le pusieron un hit. Todos los sospechosos fueron arrestados y creo que en este momento estaban esperando un juicio. Aproximadamente seis semanas después, tuvimos al segundo oficial involucrado en un tiroteo. Esto es, tal vez, lo más complicado porque tuvimos que arrestar a uno de nuestros propios oficiales. Hay mucha controversia sobre cómo fue hecho, pero había una razón convincente para ir a la escena para tratar de hacer un acuse de comunidad. Estaba involucrado con uno de nuestros exploradores y tan pronto como descubrimos, en 24 horas, tomamos una acción inmediata. Cuando fuimos a detenerlo, sacó su propia arma y disparó. He died at the scene. Exactly 30 days later, on February 28th, in the 1600 block of McClellan, a suspect, another domestic violence, another homicide. The boyfriend was in an argument with his girlfriend. Basically knocked her down, and then intentionally ran over her with a firearm killer. June 20th of this year, once again up on North Broadway, we had another murder. This was drug-related and prostitution-related, between people involved over money. There were ongoing disputes between the suspect and the victim. There was an exchange of words. And during the fight, the suspect stabbed the victim, crawled down the street, and died from the injuries. Died at the scene. The suspect in that case was arrested. On June 28th, at Broadway Avenue, we had another officer-involved shooting. We have a third. Officers attempted to stop a suspect. There was a search warrant signed and an arrest warrant issued. When he stopped, he pulled a gun on the officers. They returned fire, and he was killed at the scene. On July 3rd of 2012, there was another officer-involved shooting. This was began by the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department down in Porca, looking for a suspect. They went into pursuit, and he ended up going through the streets of Santa Maria. And of course, he ended up at Broadway and Priest Street. Suspect was armed with a handgun. The officers, for 20 minutes, engaged in conversation to try to get him to surrender. However, he picked the gun, took it, aimed it at the officers, and one officer from Santa Maria fired his weapon, and the suspect was killed. All of our officer-involved shootings involve suspects who are armed. On September 17th, at Agnes and Lincoln, there was an assault with a deadly weapon, a stabbing. This was early in the morning. Young man was walking on a sidewalk. He was attacked by two others. He was stabbed. He did survive. However, it's my knowledge that he has been very uncooperative. Will not give us a lot of details. And the investigation is continuing, however, we do believe now we know who the suspects are. The two suspects are outstanding. October 1st, 1,000 block of North Lincoln. This is kind of troubling. This is another domestic violence. A father was washing his dishes at the kitchen sink, and his son attacked him and cut his throat from ear to ear. He has survived this far so far. We know that he has survived. But this is something that was domestic in nature. Now, none of these are connected. There's no same... Officers are not the same involved in these. There is no gang affiliation across the board here. There's all... There are several... All of these are gang-related, except for one, I believe. There's all gang affiliation in these. But we could go another year, two years, and never have another officer-involved shooting. I brought these to you to let you know that we handle hundreds and hundreds of calls every day. And the vast majority of contacts by the Santa Maria Police Officers are very positive. We contact approximately 200,000 people a year, helping people at traffic collisions, domestic violence. Our officers are involved in the schools, school resource officers, and others. And of that 200,000, we arrest about 300, about 3,000 people. And of the 3,000 people that we arrest, we only use force about 100, 150 times, which comes out to about 2%. Every 100 people we arrest, we use force twice. This is a department that's not out of control. It does not have a history of violence. It does not have a history of civil rights violations. And this community, by and large, is a safe community. Although there are issues in certain areas, and we need to address them, specifically the homeless that we're going to try to help and other areas. But the reason we're here this evening is that it's important for us to receive as much information from you as we can. Because in America, we can only police with the authority that you give us. And we can only do the job as well as you allow us to. And so whenever you see something, if you can help us, we greatly appreciate it, because you're helping your community. So at this point, Rick, I would like to turn it back to you. We are going to introduce the officers in just a little while. I have reinstituted the community-based policing. We have our beat officers that we're going to introduce to you in just a little while. And at that point, if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them at that time. Thank you.
Okay, before we break off into groups of 10 to 12 to answer a couple of questions, I wanted to go over a couple of housekeeping items. As far as restrooms, restrooms are through the door to the right. As we go through this exercise, again, we're going to be breaking off into groups of 10 to 12. I'm going to ask if you can cluster your seats together and then talk about the question that we're going to pose to you. I'm going to ask if one person from your group will volunteer to record the answers. And then, after about 10 or 12 minutes, we're going to get back together as a group, and we're going to ask for that person to come up to the microphone, and we're going to be recording everyone's answers on this side and on that side. One will be in English, the other will be in Spanish. And so I would just ask for a couple of ground rules. And the ground rule being, please respect the opinions of others that are in your group. We all have our rights to our own opinions. Please no personal attacks when you're in the group, in the dialogue. No jeering or jurying when people are coming up and announcing what they felt were the important issues in their neighborhood. And please state your opinion. We're here to get input. We're here to hear what you have to say. Okay, so... If we can break up into groups, if you can get about 10 or 12 people together in your groups, I have some pads and some pencils for people to use. If I just go with one pad and pencil for each one of your groups, if you don't have any. And then, the question that's going to be posed to you is as follows. What qualities of life, basically, quality of life standards or community values would you like to see in your neighborhoods? So the question that we're posing you is what quality of life standards or values would you like to see in your neighborhoods? If you can break up into groups of 10 or 12, talk amongst yourselves for about 10 to 15 minutes. All call time. We have two minutes left to wrap up. And then I'm going to ask for a volunteer from each one of the group to come up to the microphone, and please tell us what your responses are, and we'll continue.
The first thing we came up with is that we want security. Queremos seguridad en nuestra comunidad. Queremos seguridad en nuestra comunidad. The next thing is more values. Queremos valores morales. In more values, we mean civic duty, top moral values, where people do the right thing, because that's what you're supposed to do. If you see a crime, report it. If you see an abuse, act on it. Entre los valores morales, lo que queremos decir es tener valor cívico. De que si vemos un abuso, hay que actuar. Si vemos un crimen, hay que deportarlo. No nada más porque no me afecta a mí. Le están robando a mi vecino. Eh, a mí no me afecta. It doesn't affect me, it's just my neighbor that's getting burglarized? Oh, well. My neighbor is a drug dealer. He doesn't jump the fence? It's okay. Mi vecino es un drogista. Mientras no se meta conmigo, todo está bien. Respect. From the police and to the police. Respeto. Recibo a la policía y de la policía. Para respetar, hay que ser respetable. In order to respect, we have to be respected. Cleanliness. Gratit is dirty. El gratit es sucio. Yard sales in the same houses every single weekend or even during the week? That's trash, that's dirty. That's lack of security. Kids running in between cars. El gratit es sucio y es basura. Poder verter el jardín cada quinta semana incluso diario. Eso es basura también y es un riesgo para la comunidad. ¿Es legal? No, pero nadie hace nada. Knowledge of the laws. Conocimiento de las leyes. We need more confidence in meetings like this to know about code enforcement. Estamos más juntas como esta para saber los códigos de la ciudad. Que nos dejen de robar los compratistas y no saquen permiso y todos los garajes estén arreglados. O tengan un patio atrás y tiren su dinero porque no sacaron permiso, porque tenemos miedo de ir a sacar permisos. We're afraid to go get a permit because it intimidates us and it is not user-friendly, so we bypass it and we get ripped off by, not contractors, but other people. Services. Sanvicios. Our alleyways are falling to pieces, and the northwest is full of alleys, and they're all dirty, dark, dingy, and just attract crime. There's fences that are on the ground if anything is there, but no standards to keep. Tenemos muchos callejones que están oscuros, sucios y deteriorados. Y los cercos que hay están a medias o tirados, promoviendo que aparece gente como si nada y atrayendo el clima. On our main avenue, which is Broadway, prostitution. North of Alvin, and everybody knows it, especially on Avenue. Prostitución. En la avenida principal, tenemos prostitución durante el día y parece que nadie sabe. And last but not least, accidents happen time and time again, and it seems like we don't track what happens. Therefore, signs don't come up. Por la Torre, por ejemplo, seguido pasan accidentes y pasan y pasan y no pasa nada. No hay semáforos, no hay altos. Ya ni siquiera están los policías con los lados, la bomba de petas. Not to mention, we don't have the radars anymore.
So, kind of a topic I could read to you on that. There's a leader. So... Okay, so we would like to see... Treat everyone the same, no matter your ethnicity or who you are. Just treat everyone the same. More transparency between the police department and that community. More leadership when it comes to crime scenes. So there's some there. And no racism in schools. Racism, like racism, sorry. To not... We want not to be a crime to be poor. And... Sorry. Want me to repeat all of them?
No, just the last one.
Oh, to not be a crime to be poor. To be poor.
It's not a crime to be poor, right?
Well, it's not, but that's what we like. As a moral, as a society, we want... We would like to feel safe, to walk at night, just to take a walk. And we would like to feel safe, and the police to feel safe. So that we're all safe. Just safe, we just want to feel safe. And we would like the police to think, before they're going to go arrest someone out in the public to be sure the safety of everyone around, like around the third school, there's people walking. Thank you. Can we get the next group that was captured?
The question we were listening to was, what qualities of life or standards or community values would you like to see in your neighborhood? And as I listened to the people in our group, they were people who have been residents of this community a long time, 40-plus years, business owners. You can all hear me, right? Yeah, okay. Okay. And so in years past, they said, "This was an awesome neighborhood. Things have changed." What's happened? The community has had changes. And so they tried to work with the police department. They said there are times when they have seen things going on. They have reported it. They even videotaped some of these incidents. they even videotaped some of these incidents, and then nothing seemed to have happened. It took a while in listening, as they spoke, it finally occurred to us, what they felt, one of their major concerns was, was a lack of enforcement. A lack of enforcement. So they've had, and really, I think what they were seeking in our group, to be listened to and taken seriously. They have tried to respect the police and they've worked, tried to work with them, but have not felt that that has been reciprocated, and that's one of their concerns. So, yeah, I think that's the essence of our group. Oh, they said there were many loud parties, there were, there's illegal vendors, some of these business folks who have brick and mortar buildings are getting upstaged by the folks who were just out there with a truck on the corner, and they just feel that that's really undercutting their business, so they, they would just like to have some, something done about those things.
Hi folks, I want to thank the chief coming here and all of these officers of the community for giving very much service. We talked about clean neighborhoods, parent overview, having neighborhood watch, and being able to talk to your neighbors, it's a good step in doing that, we need a lot more of this, either official or in private, this really helps. Please in touch with other people who live around us. Thank you. And prior neighborhood, that's essentially what the whole package is about. The judge just mentioned the lack of enforcement. I have lived back here in Santa Maria for three and a half years now and I've seen that firsthand, the kids who do something wrong, they're gonna slap on their wrist. And unfortunately, it's the kids that we're doing this for, we have to make sure that they follow the rules, that they know the law, and they respect the law. And that's all we really want. We want the same things, I think. I think once we get together, we talk about it, we come up with a better game plan, is we need to do something about this, this happening to our neighborhoods around us,
So our group, the first thing we talked about was about having mutual respect among the communities and with everyone else. Que haya respeto entre la comunidad y con todas las personas. Otro que hablamos fue comunicación de lenguajes en la comunidad, con el departamento de policía, que tengan consideración. So having consideration of the different languages within the community. For example, lengua mixtico or tagalog or any other languages out there, to better communicate with our people here. Otra cosa que hablamos fue unidad. So we need a lot of unity within all our neighborhoods. Otra cosa fue patrullar los vecindarios y las escuelas. So more patrolling our schools and our neighborhoods. Otra fue, increase safety and confidence. So necesitamos más confianza y más seguridad con el departamento de policía. Yo creo, en nuestro grupo conocemos que hay mucho ahorita rencor en esta comunidad, en todo el interior, en some of us. So we need to develop a way of bettering and increasing the confidence with our own police department here. And open our opinions, que no sean dismissed. So we need to be able to say our opinions and not to be dismissed.
Our group had many of the same concerns as the third event voiced, peace, safety, neighborhood cooperation. Many neighborhoods have speeded traffic, they feel that they need more police patrol. There are some that see gang activity in the area, they would like to be able to report that without having fear for some deportation, they would like the community to take ownership Much of it hinges on, I think, the police presence. I think it also has to do with coming from the city, starting at that level, what's the power that the city's gonna delegate to the police, what can they do? When the police are called, many folks don't wanna hear, there's nothing I can do, it's a civil matter, it's not for them to enforce. Oftentimes, folks hear that and that's not why they're calling, they're calling for help, they want that help. I think that also, Alice Patino said that some attitudes, change some attitudes, well whose attitudes need to be changed. I think that there's some politicians' attitudes that need to be changed, there's some, this northwest area, there's folks that live here that need to be cared about, and so yes, there are some attitudes that need to be changed. Chief Alec Martin said, what do we want? We want to live in peace. Well, we do want to live in peace. I think also that peace and quiet means a lot to a lot of folks. City officials who have wrongfully issued permits to businesses in residential areas, thus disrupting the peace and quiet of those folks, need to recognize them, to stay, need to take a step back and humbly review that process without the neighborhood folks having to go to court and get judges' orders to handle it. It should never, their mission to begin with, so, yes, folks do need to care about people
What we had talked about in the other four parties, the police can only do so much, the most of something they've ever done about our area. A big part is education, families getting educated, everything, everything, from their children, if they're being involved in gangs, recognizing, tip their child as being in a gang. All these people would like too much on the police instead of being proactive themselves, as you get into children, their families, their churches. I'm a probation officer, I work in San Luis County, so I deal with a lot of juveniles that are struggling, getting involved in gangs and coming up. Parents are ignorant and to recognizing certain signs that, hey, my kid's being involved in something else. Target the youth in this area, having more youth outreach groups. I see a lot, there's a lot of ministers here tonight, which is good, I'm glad to see that. Having more, for the boys especially, having more big boy programs or getting involved in sports or having more activities, so that we can keep these kids off the streets. Could you keep them on the streets, they're gonna get involved with the older gangsters and drug dealers and prostitution, which leads to more crime for everybody. Also, a lot of the families, some of the people that we spoke with, they feel discouraged. They might call somebody, they think, call the police, think it's a very serious matter, by the time the officer gets to the house, you know, they may not take it as serious as the family. Obviously, a victim's gonna have a lot more emotions about the incident as opposed to an officer maybe who doesn't understand the situation. But as neighbors, as a community, we need to reach out to each other.
Yeah, pretty much all the same issues that have already been talked about. They want to see more confidence in the police, more diligence among the neighborhood, like neighborhood watch, I think that was already mentioned. There was something mentioned about, they see a lot of dogs running loose in their neighborhood and everybody would just kinda, you know, be more responsible individually. And also a big thing was, when they want to have more, definitely more confidence with the police, when they call, they feel discouraged, that was a big thing. But like as they said, they get so many calls, so. There's also something to do with the morality. I know probably most of you are familiar with the Spearmint Rhino, it's right across the street from the library. And if we're talking about morality, I think that maybe mentioning of a relocation of that The Spearmint.
The strip club? We have a strip club right next to our community ladder, for our children to see that. One of the libraries.
Yeah, that was pretty much all we had.
Alright, so, I, our group, I think we echoed a lot of what the last group just said. There was a lot of conversation around wanting our children to be able to grow up in a safe environment, you know, Nazis drinking during the day, they don't wanna get to school safely. But we did bring up the point that, you know, there aren't enough police to be at every school, after school, to make sure the kids are able to cross the street safely, so one of the values we talked a lot about is volunteerism. So, este, hablamos mucho de la, la entera de los niños y pues llegamos al mismo punto que apenas hizo el otro, el otro grupo, que no hay suficientes policías para estar en cada escuela, ¿verdad? Y por eso dijimos que un valor que, pues que hablamos mucho de un valor de ser voluntarios y tener una cultura donde es más humano ser voluntario. We also said collaboration is a value, I think that would help our, our safety a lot. You know, we talked about the challenges of volunteerism, that we wouldn't get the same respect running our caswalk that a police officer would, and so just to see more collaboration, we could make the most out of, out of that, that work. So otro valor que dijimos era colaboración. Este, trabajar juntos con los residentes aquí de la comunidad y los policías. Another value we talked about is unity. Recognizing that, you know, if we all care about the same issue or problem, we need to work together to solve it. Otro valor fue la unidad. Reconocer si estamos batallando con el mismo problema todos, tenemos que trabajar juntos para resolverlo. Another value we talked about was sharing knowledge. So we'd like to see more programs similar to listos, for example, with the fire department, where the police department could train our residents and really get them the skill set to be able to be those eyes and ears and increase enforcement in the community for our safety. Otro valor era compartir sabiduría. Ver más programas, igual a, por ejemplo, el programa listos del departamento de bomberos, donde los policías nos enseñan a los, a los residentes para poder ayudar a imponer la ley y asegurar que haya más, este, seguridad aquí en la comunidad. And another one more was commitment, so compromiso fue otro valor, from the city to us and vice versa. And then finally, trust, going both ways. So también otro valor fue confianza. So for example, trust is just so important, particularly when someone's undocumented and they're afraid to call the police for fear of deportation. We all need to recognize that if one person's afraid to report a crime, we're all in danger, whether or not we're documented or not. So that's why we really feel trust between the people in the department is so important. So pensamos que la confianza del departamento y la gente es muy, muy importante, esencialmente cuando hay gente que no tiene papel y si tienen miedo de llamar a los policías por miedo de ser deportado, tenemos que reconocer que cuando uno nos reporta un crimen, nos pone a todos en peligro, no importa si tengamos papeles o no.
Do we have, do we have any other groups that need to, we have?
Hola, nuestro grupo decidimos... Nuestro grupo decidimos de que esta comunidad necesitamos especialmente más guardias en el norte de la Broadway, porque sí, hay muchos accidentes, ¿verdad?, hay mucho crimen y además, en la calle, que es el camino y la, la hermosa, están muchos hoyos porque el pavimento se está terminando y muy deteriorado el cemento.
The, what we, we're talking about is that, the northwest area, which is Broadway, and there needs to be more, more vigilance, vigilance from the police department, because there's a lot of activity there with people that break the law on the north, northwest end. And we were saying about the El Camino, street over here on the, El Camino en Vail, there's a couple of streets are really, really in bad shape, that they need to be, that they need to be, taken care of with the lockdown and with the stuff.
Okay, la otra es que en el, en la calle Broadway y la que viene del, del parque, el parque es un, sí, que sale la calle, vienes a la Broadway y das vuelta para ir al freeway, por ejemplo. En esa calle hemos visto muchos accidentes, porque yo trabajo mucho, la mañana, entonces yo he visto muchos accidentes porque el cemento está muy liso. La que viene del Parkes Park, la calle, y das vuelta a la Broadway para ir al freeway al norte, esa calle pasa muchos accidentes porque el cemento está liso. Y ya hemos dicho, los policías, cuando hay accidentes, que allí ese cemento está liso y no, nos dijeron, oh, es por culpa del chofer, que vamos a verse, pero no, es por ese cemento.
So Broadway, Broadway, yeah, the street coming off of the Parkes Park, and Broadway, there's a lot of accidents there, and, and she's, she drives through there a lot, and she's seen so much, they sit there and they, they call the police department and they say that the drivers, the spot, they drive too fast.
Otro favor grande que le pedimos a la ciudad especialmente, que aquí nuestra iglesia necesita otra salida por la parte de atrás, porque es una apertura para el tráfico y necesitamos que haya otra salida, y si la ciudad nos hiciera un gran favor, porque estamos muy apretados para salir, ese es el punto que se nos agradecería mucho.
And we were saying about that, over here in our church, over here on San Juan Newman, that we need another exit outlet to go from the parking lot into the street, because there's one there over there, the, the east side of the church, that could be opened right there, we've been trying, we try some, some of the time to get the progress from the city, and for some reason, they cannot do it, but maybe they could help us to have another outlet there so we can get, get all the traffic up, in an easier manner.
So in our group, everyone spoke up and had something to contribute, so I wanna honor them by just letting you know what was said. They had some concerns that Depot and Williams, there's a lot of parties, fast traffic, dangerous traffic, and lots of hidden pines, there's racing, I guess, vehicle racing, that's pretty commonly known, late night foot traffic, especially with minors, that was the big concern. And Alvin, the low light, just the, the lack of light there, and Grant and Monroe, a lot of vandalism, breaking windows, throwing... And Grant and Monroe, a lot of vandalism, breaking windows, throwing food, specifically eggs at homes and cars. So also, the other thing about it was at Western and Donovan, there was a real bad intersection there where the traffic is, there's a blind spots and it's just scary. And so in an effort to bring this to values or what we value as a community, a lot of the things that were already said, safety, family-friendly neighborhoods, seem to be something that was desired, safe and well-lit streets. That homes and vehicles could somehow be safe from vandalism. Litter-free streets, safe traffic flow, caring for, just simply caring for one another and one another's things.
El grupo de lo que dice es que si se pudieran evitar tantas fiestas, tantas carreras de carros, parece que por las blaster y hidden mines se corre mucho, hay muchas carreras de carros. Ellos quieren más patrullas ahí. Habla también de que, porque no hay las luces pedidas, y también nada más este crimen, lo que estamos hablando también es, si se necesitan luces en las calles, porque lo que dice él, que no tener la luz apropiada trae mucho crimen y trae mucho vandalismo, quebran muchas ventanas, especialmente por allá. Mencionaba el señor que en la Gran y en la Monroe, precisamente por las luces ahí, se comete mucho vandalismo, en la Western, en la Danovan, se necesitan más patrullas porque hay mucho tráfico y es difícil salir de la Western a la Danovan y casi evitar un accidente. Y no hay patrullas también por ahí. Además, que nada es un poque, en lo que si hay bastante luz, se evita el crimen y si hay bastantes patrullas, se evita otra vez el crimen.
In the sake of time, is there any other issues that are out there that we need to address, that we can write down and put up on the wall before we move on to the community-based policing?
Para ahí, para ahorrar tiempo, Sergio, si ustedes sienten que algo que no se trapa con la acción de lo que se hicieron en las listas, pueden presentarlo en este momento antes de conseguir con la junta. Levanten la mano.
Coming from this community, it's very clear that we have a very diverse community. We have a good, family-based community. But unfortunately, or fortunately, it's very diverse. And the rules that we have are not relayed or interpreted by the community. There's a lot of ignorance. There's ignorance to the codes. There's a culture difference that some people think that, you know, they can have a live band in their house and have a party. And we feel that I own my house, so I can do whatever I want as long as I don't cross the fences. And we don't, we are very incommunicated and detached from code enforcement and items that we've already talked about. So it is vital that we outreach to the community and educate. Education is very important. We can go on issues all day long, but until people don't realize that they're doing wrong, they're going to continue to do it. So educate. And for that, we would have to partner with the people that do understand the cultures.
Uno de las cosas que hemos, no hemos tocado, es que tenemos que educar a la comunidad. Porque mientras haya ignorancia y no sepamos que estamos haciendo mal, lo vamos a continuar haciendo. Si creemos que tener un conjunto en vivo es legal y lo vamos a hacer, porque es mi casa y no me van a decir que tengo que hacer en mi casa. Y no respetamos a los vecinos y los códigos. No sabemos que es ilegal hacer un edificio de tres pisos sin permisos. Tenemos que educar a la comunidad, si no, va a suceder de estas veces. Tenemos que asociarnos con las entidades que conocen a la cultura. So educate and partner with the entities that do know the cultures.
My name is Rick Adon. I really appreciate this meeting. We should have had this meeting a year ago, two years ago. This is really good. However, I and the community are very disgusted because we have not had any leadership in the city, elected officials that have come up and said, this is enough, enough is enough. People go before city council and talk. I've been there, so I've talked to a few of you guys about what's happening in the community. Said, thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir, nothing happens. I think we should be proactive as leaders of the community, as well as leaders, elected leaders, political leaders. And I would like to see more of these meetings, Rick. Please continue this and allow the people to talk about what they feel, like what we have felt for the last year and have a lot of disgust, a lot of things that are happening that have never come up from the leaders of our city. On each sheet, as well as the city council. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Esther Acosta, and I'm a member of the community. And I, you know, first of all, like what you were saying, this meeting should be happening throughout the community. And Dolly was saying that we do, we do have a very diverse community. And it is true, I don't know, you probably, well, unfortunately, many professional people are not aware that we have a large community of mixteco, families here. You know, those are all our car workers. And their kids, they should have the same rights in school. And sometimes they get misjudged, say that, oh, they're just gang members. You know, but what's not happening too is that we're like most, some of our teachers, they're not being educated culturally in the way to, that they are able to address all the students' needs. So they keep sort of hiding. And then before we start asking who, what happened, they just automatically sometimes they get that title, that they're a gang member. So I would definitely like to see more workshops, you know, so hopefully we can educate ourselves as a community and try to get along. So lo que les estoy diciendo es que eso debería de pasar más seguido. Hay una cantidad de familias mixtecas, es otra cultura más diferente. Entonces la mayoría de las veces en las escuelas, todos esos niños se están siendo hostigados. Y después se les acusa de que son miembros de la gang o lo que sea. Y a veces ya van por eso y así se les identifica. Y a veces los oficiales van y tal vez no se toman el tiempo para saber realmente qué está pasando en nuestras escuelas también. So eso es muy importante. And just thank you, thank you for the time and again, if we, I believe, that if we work together as a community, our community should be better. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Spengler. And one thing we haven't covered tonight, it's something I've been intimately involved in over the last several months here. What I've been doing is I've been going around in Santa Maria. It's something that's ever been done in the history of Santa Maria. I'm actually going and I'm visiting all 100 churches in Santa Maria. That's approximately how many we have, documenting everything that they do. And I'm finding out basically the level of leadership that we have in our town on a spiritual level. One of the things that's happening in our town here is that we've been looking at a lot of these physical problems. But I believe that the root cause that's causing a lot of these things is that there's been a, basically we force up our moral standards that we've had for many, many years. What it is, is in essence, is we have a spiritual problem in Santa Maria. And we need to deal with it with spiritual means. Unfortunately, as I go through a lot of the churches here in Santa Maria, I have a document right here, I go to 41 churches. I document what I do every week, what's going on in every single church. Unfortunately, only 40% of the churches in Santa Maria, out of my records here, show that there's any type of church prayer meetings that go on in this community every week. So what's basically happening is a lot of the leadership, the spiritual leadership of our town, has not really been doing their job. And because of that, this is a consequence of what we're seeing. And then what I wanted to say tonight is this, is I just wanted to speak to the civic leaders and encourage them. You know, as you said, how many pastors are here? We have about five stand up. Where are the other 95? Where are they tonight? And I just want to encourage the civic leaders is to encourage the pastors, encourage the Christians, to do their moral duty before their God and to pray and to encourage. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of these people out there doing all these things, we're talking all these different things, is that there's a lot of lost sheep out there. But unfortunately, we just let them go. We didn't have the heart to go out and grab them and bring them back into our churches. This really is the problem that Santa Maria has. And unless we address this problem, as we saw right up here on the board, the chief of police just said, in eight years, we had one officer dog shooting. But in the last, less than a year, we've had four. Now, if we don't deal with this on a spiritual level, we're going to be back here very shortly, instead of four, we're going to have forty. And we're going to be wringing our hands and saying, what should we do, what should we do, what should we do? The solution here is a spiritual problem we have in our town. And we have to deal with it, all the pastors, all the Christians, we have to deal with it on a spiritual level. Thanks for your time.
Okay, my name is Laura Zara, and I'm president of a organization called LULAC. We're a solo organization, we work on civil rights, education, health, help the military, different things of community faces. I want to talk because we just did a little routine here to find out what the concerns were. One of them was respect each other. Next thing I hear, a gentleman gets up here and says that these people are ignorant and we have to educate them. First step, you don't call people ignorant. They're not aware. We hope they'll get aware. You don't call people ignorant and expect them to participate. You have a lot to learn about the Hispanic community. The city council, they knew these problems were there. They didn't take no action. They went, more people got killed, more victims came by, and we still don't have answers. They come up and say that it was a justifiable shooting. But they don't look at the whole picture, what created this? It's just like they say, if you don't remember history, you're about to repeat it. That's what we're talking about here. We still keep doing the same thing, we're going to get the same problem. The chief that's here, good man, comes here to try to help the situation. His job is to make sure that the city doesn't get sued, basically. But it's also to try to straighten out this mess. My concern now really hurts me in the heart. Too many people are getting killed, too many hard people are getting harassed, too many of them are getting bullied. It's a racial problem also. Face it, that's the word. We need to talk to each other, we need to meet like this. There's a thing at the high schools at Santa Maria High, it's called Cabe Cito, where you get together, drink coffee, Alvin and the Spider-Man, he got more, whatever. Break bread with each other. Just become human again, okay? That's what it takes. And you don't wait till a lot of people get killed before you move. I asked every city council person, including the mayor, including the administrator, to change the way we were going. I didn't like it the way we were going from the beginning, because of all the problems that was creating. It took a lot of people to die, a lot of people that are hurt are in this town still. A lot of people that aren't going to come to the police because of this. We need to mend fences, we need to make comfort for these people. They don't know that things will change and we're going to make sure that it changes. We need to change some of the city council and the mayor's position. Understand one thing, if we keep going the same way, we're going to create the same road. This is a good beginning, let's talk to each other, let's be honest with each other. And I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not satisfied with saying it was a justifiable homicide. And I'm going to go as far as I have to go with this to bring back to this community. This is why it happened. Let's not repeat it, let's do something different, let's get together and work on it. Not put it under the carpet. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sherrod Knotts. I'm working for Ace here for four years. I am a business owner for a very long time. Santa Maria was a beautiful town. It was beautiful until about 10 years ago. I don't know what happened. I wish somebody would please come forward and tell me what has happened. I kind of, I agree with this gentleman's half-statement. I don't agree with his first statement. This community, we are whole, sir. There is a lot of white inherent people, there is a lot of white, you know, it's for you to say that he was picking on Hispanics, sir, I did not hear that. And he didn't mean it as ignorant as being, no. He meant it to say that there is a lack of education, big difference. You singled him out, and I don't think that was fair. I see it every day at my business, all kinds of violations from every walk of earth that this city has. The problem I have, and the first gentleman or the second said it perfectly, was there are codes in this city. People do not know that. They just basically move in, do what they want to do, they don't care about anybody else. Okay, I don't know how you get across to them. I want people to see this right here and now. This alone is 95 pages of just the index of our city code compliance. 95 pages, okay? That shows you everything where you can go to, which is a municipal code, which is basically the city's bible for us, pretty much how to live and how to enforce it, okay? Now, I'm going to let the code enforcement off the hook tonight because, excuse me, they work during the day. I have never had a problem with them not resolving anything that they got to. The problem is that I see is after they go home and on weekends, how do you get the police to enforce our city codes? That's the problem I have. My God, you come up to a police and you say, well, he's violating this code. Well, I don't seem to think, I don't see where he is. He is, he's doing it here in black and white. Well, I have not seen that. Well, of course you haven't seen it, because this is, if this is 95 pages, see, how many pages in your code enforcement? 1,500 pages? You know, that's 15 times this stack. Has any police officer ever read all 1,500 pages? Have you? No, you haven't. So what's very frustrating to me is, you know, they're based So what's very frustrating to me is, you know, they're basically going by their judgment, and a lot of things are being left unhandled because they don't know the codes, and nobody's getting reprimanded for it. Okay? It starts at the bottom and it goes to the top. Every crime is a crime. I don't care if it's, you know, littering, catering truck. I came here and I saw trucks, diesel trucks, catering trucks, all out of code enforcement. I'm sure you guys drove past them. Look the other way, look the other way. That affects other people in this community, and it's against our city codes. Do something about it. Slap them in the hands, write them a ticket, and maybe they won't do it again. But that doesn't seem to be happening. So, big communications problem. Major communication problem. Until everybody gets together, code enforcement, police, and people learn, this is learning people, that there are guidelines that unfortunately, we all have to live by them in order to get along. Thank you.
Mr. Dusby, we'll have you be the last one because we want to continue going on.
A comment was made that, um, as a community, we kept ignoring what was going on and what was going on. I have the good fortune of getting to work with a lot of police officers, very fine officers out there. However, and I'm directing these comments now to the city council also, you knew about problems for a lot of years. You were told over and over again, and you didn't do anything about it. Now, I just want to remind everybody in this room that this is an election year. You can do something about that. If somebody can be on the city council for five years or 20 years, and ignore the things that have gone on, time and time and time again. Now, Chief Martin has come, and I've taught to people from the top to the bottom of the police department, and things are a lot better now, okay? And they're going to get better. But we have to hold the people that have caused the problem accountable. It's the only way to do it. So I would just suggest everybody get out there and vote. Vote your conscience and vote for the person that you think will do something to help the community. Thank you.
Okay, we'll be right along. What we've done is put together a listing of everything that everyone has said tonight. They're up on the boards, you can take a look around them. I'm going to indicate right now that the next phase is not going to be tonight, and it's putting together an action plan. And that is dealing with an action plan to put in place to address these items that we need to address and everyone brought to our attention. I'm going to ask, in the development of the action plan, that'll be in the next several weeks, if anybody is interested in helping city staff put together the action plan and to incorporate it and to implement it. If I can see a list of city employees that are here tonight, if you can raise your hands. Look around the room, if you can raise their hands. If anyone's interested in volunteering to help put together an action plan, they're basically around the room right now on the corners. See one of them, give them your name, and we will be contacting you later. We will be having another meeting to talk about the implementation of this action plan. But what I'd like to do at this point is turn it back over to Chief Martin, introduce the community-based policing unit, our B officers, and also our code enforcement officers. Thank you, Mr. Dusby. Before I introduce the B coordinators, which is part of a community-based policing, community-based policing is not a new concept, it's been around for many years. However, there was a lull here in Santa Maria, and due to some shortages, for some reason, it was taken away. I want to address a couple of quick issues that came up here. School safety, somebody brought that up. School safety is very important because our most precious commodity is our children. And so we want to make sure they're safe. History in the past, we've had five school resource officers. We now have two. Mr. Hayden and the city council has provided funding, and we are going to play another school resource officer out, and we're going to try to get that number back up, it's still there there. And I know the children feel better when there's somebody on campus. Right now, we have two, so we can increase that. The thing about the parking lot out here, I can't do anything about, but I'm going to assign that to Monsignor Herrera. You can take care of that, of course. All right. And the last thing I want to say is this. As the Chief of Santa Maria Police Department, I can assure you that regardless of your status in this country, if you report a crime or are a victim of a crime, your status will not be infringed in any way whatsoever. And you will never be reported by us, and we will not report that. If you're the victim of a crime or you report a crime. I want to make that very clear. Thank you. Okay, quickly, I would like to go ahead. I'm sorry. Oh, please, I'm sorry. Of course. I have a map of the city here. The city has historically always been divided into various parts or segments. That's very routine for all cities. And the city has 24, approximately 24 square miles, with about 100,000 residents. And what we want to do is to let you know exactly who is in charge of our community-based policing. And in turn, we are going to give you their, their phone number so that you can contact them directly at the station for any issues that you might have. So first, I would like to introduce our team leader, somebody who's been in law enforcement almost 30 years, and it's Sergeant Chris Nartantes. Chris, come on up. Give her a clap. Our, our B officer in B1 area, and this, I want to make sure that we understand it. B1 area is early north of the city where we're at now, all the way down to about, I want to say that is Fessler, Buck Fessler, approximately. And that is Corporal Udi Vey. I'm sorry. It's Mike Fessler, Buck Fessler, north of the city, that Fessler. The second B is in the middle here. And that is, you know, pretty much the central part of the city. And the officer there is Elieo Lara, Corporal Lara, come on up. And B3 is Jeff Lopez, Corporal Lopez, come on up. Now, they have regular duties that they perform day in, day out. However, we've elected to reinstate the community-based policing, and part of that entails that we are going to give them all city cell phones. So we're going to publish those cellphone numbers. We don't have it just yet, right? We've just ordered it. We're going to publish them and give those cellphone numbers to you. And when you have an incident that maybe you think does not rise to a 911 call, or maybe does not rise to think you need to call the station, maybe something that can be, it's going to happen over the weekend, whatever quality of life issue that you think you may have, then you call them direct. You don't have to go through the station. And it's a great program. Now, they're going to be very busy. They're not going to be working seven days, we'll be 24 hours a day. But they will call you back, they will address the issues. And in turn, what they do is they provide the information to the neighborhood B officers that are there, the neighborhood cars, and they assign them the details of the issues that you're having. So if they happen to be working night shift, and this works during the day, we need to interpret. During the day, then they will assign that to somebody. I also want to introduce our code compliance officers. And we talked about code compliance. The city is keenly aware that the code compliance is very important, and that they're doing things to increase numbers. But I would like to introduce, first, our senior code enforcement officer, is Zech Moreno. Is he here? There. And I believe Michelle Tassiter is also there. There's Michelle here. Oh, there she is. She couldn't be any closer. Michelle, put your hand up if I may see. Michelle Tassiter. At the moment, I say that this is the first town hall that we're having. It is certainly not the last. Our intention is to even walk neighborhoods to provide a survey that we're going to pass out, similar to what you see here. And people are going to be able to tell us what their needs are, what their greatest concerns are. And then we collect those, we put them together just like we're doing here, and then we'll return to the meeting and let you know how we're going to impact that using your officers and the code compliance. One of the things that we're going to do tonight, you've all been passed out a little sticker, blue stickers. What we would like you to do is to take your time and look at these sheets that we have up here, and you put a blue sticker next to that area that is most important to you. Not your group, not your neighbor, what's most important to you. And that way, we'll have a good start in looking to see how I and the rest of the staff can then begin to impact some of the issues that you have each and every day. Okay, before we wrap up this evening, again, I would like to thank the congregation St. John Newman's, and then also Monsignor Herrera for allowing us to use this hall. We do have an evaluation form that's on the back of your agenda. If we could have you fill it out, because that will give us great information the next time we want to hold a community forum, what we need to do to improve after this evening. And lastly, there's three upcoming events that I want to just announce. This Saturday is Serve Santa Maria. And for those of you that do not know what Serve Santa Maria is, it's giving back to the community, it's cleaning up your neighborhoods, it's cleaning up special projects. We're asking for people to volunteer a couple hours on this Saturday. Meet at 8:30 at the Abel Auguste Yee Center off of Apollon Street. There'll be donuts and coffee in the morning for everybody that shows up. You'll be getting your assignments to help clean up Santa Maria. And then at the end, at the afternoon, around 12:30, 1:00, we'll be wrapping up and we'll be having some lunch. So we would really encourage, the more people that come out, the better we'll be able to clean up Santa Maria. The other thing is, at the end of this month, on the 22nd, we're going to be having another community forum, but this time, we're trying to elicit information from the public as to what you're looking at in the next Chief of Police. On the 23rd, we'll be having one in Spanish, and that'll be also at the Veterans Memorial Center. And stay tuned, read the papers, we'll be announcing those in the next coming weeks. So the 22nd will be in City Hall, that one will be in English, and then on the 23rd, it will be at the Dead Center, and then it'll be in Spanish. So again, on behalf of the city council, city staff, Monsignor, I'd like to thank you for participating. So again, as you leave, please put one dot next to one of those things if you think are the most important items. Also, Councilmember O'Rourke has handouts for the All-America City Committee, and we also have information on code compliance that you can get underway as well. Yes?
The chief mentioned earlier that there is going to be a time for questions, and I was going to ask you, when is that time for questions to direct for the Chief of Police or the officers himself?
We can take a couple of questions right now, but as far as the forum, we're pretty much done with the conclusion. But if you'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, I do. And my question is, when, when do you determine? How do you determine when to use lethal force, living even capital? On your blotter there, there's two incidences that occurred in this city that are not on there. One was Lee Leeds, who walked into Black Road Auto Salvage and murdered four innocent people. He was apprehended by the Santa Maria Police Department. Ironically, Officer Corporal Rubius was one of the people that responded at the scene. Unfortunately, the same standard wasn't used when arresting Officer Corporal Rubius when they arrested Mr. Lee Leeds. Another gentleman by the name of Nicholas Bendel. An elderly, a 68-year-old elderly man was walking on his morning walk here in Santa Maria. He was decapitated by Mr. Bendel. Decapitated. He was also arrested by the Santa Maria Police Department. The reason I bring that to your attention, sir, is the people that are deceased on your blotter, they're all Hispanic. The two people, Mr. Leeds and Mr. Bendel, who perpetrated the most horriblest crimes in this town since I've been here, they saw their day in court. The other four Hispanics are now in the cemetery. And the thing they had in common, sir, they were all armed with similar weapons. You know, we hear people talk about, oh, how they have a spiritual problem, how local business owners aren't respected. We have to have respect of the people that enforce the laws of this city. I believe that the duty of the police department is to protect and serve everybody, especially the majority of people that live in this town. Over 70% of the people that live in this town are Hispanic. Please, talk to your officers, let them know to understand our culture. We all live here together. Remember, the Declaration of Independence says, "All men are created equal." And if we can remember that, I would really appreciate it. And if we can remember that, I would really appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
I am not aware of the other incidents, if they happened prior to me getting here, I'll look into them, but I do not know of them, and I've not been briefed on them. All right, so, you're looking at four Hispanic police officers, sir, okay? All right, and let me share something else with you. If there are seventy percent Hispanic people in the city, perhaps seventy percent of the crimes being committed at that rate, all right? I'm not going to sacrifice my officers on the altar of public opinion because you're upset about it. If you want to have a conversation with me, I would be happy to do that.
It's just treat everybody.
Sir, sir, I grew up on a farm in Minnesota. My grandparents are from Ireland. My great-grandparents were there. You won't find a better police chief than being a limo bee. I respect everybody. Finally, my best friends are Hispanic, and these people know it because they've been in the police department for the last two months. All right, this is not a racial issue with these crimes. These were criminals that happened to live in your community. These are all good people here, but we had some bad apples here.
And Mr. Bendel?
I don't know who Mr. Bendel is.
Are they not bad apples?
I would be more than happy to have a cup of coffee and sit down with you and review the whole thing. But I am not going to throw a blanket over this entire department. There are a lot of good men in here. Thank you all.